Everybody this evening, Ms. Mona. Ms. Mona. Where she at? Did she leave? Perfect, Ms. Fisher. Fledge, pledge please.
A delegation to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being justice.
All board members are present with us this evening. Do we have any public attendance?
We have that on the sheet.
Agenda adjustments?
There are none.
Personnel, student achievement recognitions?
We do have a couple this evening. If I could have Mrs. Lambert come up.
And if you want to have any of your folks join you, we'll do this one first. So first recognition this evening, if I could have my CTE teachers who are here this evening to join us up front, please. Don't be shy, Mr. Barnes. Don't start now. Alright. So for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, our CTE program at Lewis County High School was given two recognitions. We were in, we were recognized as part of the pinnacle club, in the top ten percent in the state in the testing passage rate, which put us as one of the top five programs in the state. So congratulations. And our second award also went to them. We were also in the pinnacle club in the top five, top ten percent in the state for concentrators as well. So congratulations to our CTE program as well. So with us is Mrs. Flo, which is one of our business teachers. I have Mr. Parks from Law and Public Safety. And I have Mrs. Audrey Birkett, who has joined us for our business program as well. So great work being done right now in our CTE program. Actually, yes, if you want a picture? Here we go. Come back. Come on. There is no such thing. Alright, thank you. Thank you. Alright, and then I need Mrs. Moffitt up here with us. With me.
So Lewis County High School has been named Champion of College Access and Success. In recognition of dedication and service directly contributing to the expansion of college access and student success efforts among West Virginia students, the West Virginia Higher Education Policy Commission and the West Virginia Council for Community and Technical College Education recognizes Lewis County High School as a 2025 Champion of College Access and Success.
Congratulations.
Thank you all very much.
Congratulations. Do we have any student discipline?
None this evening.
Academics?
None this evening.
Delegations?
None this evening.
Consider approved mill agreement between Lewis County Board of Education and Central Western Community Action Head Start for 2025-2026 school year. Practice $2.94. Lunch $4.71. Sorry about that. Consider approved Southern Regional Education Board proposal for secondary professional development standards, based grading and professional learning communities, October 1st, 2025 through June 1st, 2026, an amount of $44,000. No motion for approval?
Make a motion.
I'll second it. Any discussion?
Where's the money come out for this?
These three items for SREV are coming out of instructional funds.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Consider approved Southern Regional Education Board proposal, elementary professional development standards, standard based grading and professional learning communities, October 1st, 2025 through June 1st, 2026, an amount of $105,600. No motion for approval?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Consider approved the Southern Regional Education Board proposal for leadership professional development, Lewis County Schools, October 1st, 2025 through June 1st, 2026, an amount of $22,000. No motion for approval?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Consider approved revising the pay for all before and after school tutors to $40.34 per hour effective July 1st, 2025 through June 30, 2026. No motion for approval?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, the money's coming out.
Dr. Stewart, how did we arrive at that number? What was it posted?
So that number allows teachers to take home a certain amount of pay that we tell them. So this includes their, all their benefits and so forth. And what was posted before was not accurate.
So we're just correcting it?
Yes, we're correcting it.
Where is this money coming from?
Mr. Parks.
General fund.
Title one.
Title one, okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Do we have a motion to approve policies as provided?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Do we have a motion to approve personnel agenda as provided? I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Approved minutes from the previous board meeting, October 13th, 2025, regular meeting. No motion for approval?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Use of building and grounds. Sprint Award Lewis County Youth Wrestling, use of Lewis County High School gym, restaurants, cafeteria concessions for youth wrestling tournament December 20, December 12th, 2025, 6:00 p.m. through December 13th, 2025, 9:00 p.m. Pending updated paperwork and insurance. Do we have a motion for approval?
Make a motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Finance. Consider approved payroll and payments and bills, $2,477,773.17. No motion for approval?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Consider approved monthly financial report for September 2025. No motion for approval?
Second.
I'll second it. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mariah, this is helpful. Yeah, thank you. That's a lot, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Very good.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Consider approved the budget journal entries for September 2025. No motion for approval?
Make a motion.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Consider approved the budget journal entries for September 2025, BJE, numbers 9,001 through 9,006. No motion for approval?
Second.
I'll second. Any discussion?
So the budget reallocation, the $257,000, you're just moving that someplace else? Is that what I mean?
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Consider approved fiscal year 2025 carryover budget journal entries. No motion for approval?
Second.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Reports in discussion, transportation, facilities and safety.
Good evening, everyone. So I have, for safety, we've had a very rough couple weeks with inspections. And most of these inspections are second and third violations. The historical background on this is unknown at this time. However, when the notices are coming out and we're seeing them highlighted, then it's not only an uphill battle to get these things repaired, but it's also repairing goodwill that we have. So this resonates here from the fire marshal to elevator inspections as well as the health department. The key one recently, this morning, is my meeting with the health department today. So they have, I knew there was a problem and we have worked together with trying to find a solution. We have an approved PO. It is a, every bit of two-week process to repair the drains and the sewer problems that are at Jane Lou in particular. So with that, we have approved POs in the neighborhood of $3,000 to get this work done, but it's slotted right now for the Christmas break. So that plan then was laid out to the health inspector this morning and we have that communication come back and he accepted that plan. So we have goodwill there with the health inspector. I just need to keep him updated and we can move forward then with repairs to the drains at Jane Lou. Then I also went to Jane Lou today and educated the staff, in particular the kitchen, on how to mitigate the risks of any of those drain problems that are in the kitchen area in particular. So to let you know, from the playground area at the back of the building all the way through to the front of the cafeteria, we need to saw cut and redo all the drains for Jane Lou. So it's a big project.
Can I ask a question, stop there for a moment?
Yes.
So, how long have we known that that's a problem? Known for quite some time because I think at last year's LSIC meeting at Jane Lou, we talked about this very issue, you know? So I mean, it's been a problem for, for quite some time and now the health department's calling us, calling out, calling us out on it? That's what's happening here?
It's, uh,
Explain it more to me, a little bit more to me.
The health department has come out in response to a complaint, okay?
So, somebody filed a complaint.
The generation of the complaint, unknown and, you know, I, I don't care to investigate that.
Sure.
The fact, no reason to, right? It doesn't help us, it doesn't buy us any time, doesn't buy us any money. So the problem that persists at Jane Lou is an ongoing problem for years.
Right.
And facilities in particular has done, I guess, their best to continue to snake the drains, snake the drains. As a contractor, fresh set of eyes from the outside looking in, if you have to snake a drain more than twice, then let's investigate the problem.
Right.
Okay? And so that's what I've done. And so the entire, from the back of the building to the front of the building, the entire septic system has failed as far as that goes and it needs major repairs. Right. And so we're, we have a plan in place, we have the budget for it and the contractors are lined up. I need two weeks.
Got that. That answer is my pleasure.
Yes.
Thank you.
So going to the elevators. The elevators for years have not been able to communicate with the 911 center when you pick up the phone, if there's a problem inside the elevator. And this has been going on for quite some time. And instead of going back to the phone company over the old technology analog twisted copper, I'm gonna bypass the whole thing. We're going wifi and we're gonna implement that so the elevators can be up to speed with modern technology. Right? And that, I, I don't know why this, you know, neither here nor there, it's giving effects.
Right.
Right? Let's see. Then we have the fire marshal inspection. And the fire marshal is the same type of thing with fire alarm panels, not communicating with the 911 centers. So we are bypassing the analog, the twisted copper and we're going straight over to the panic buttons through wifi, which is an immediate response to the 911 center. So that's what we're doing for safety. Any other question about safety? Uh, let's see. Highlights on Lewis County High School. So the carpet replacement in the library, we have a PO, I believe was approved. I'm waiting for the documentation for that. And that is scheduled mid-November and hopefully it should be done by the 1st of December. The, and a key there on library, because I believe last meeting, one of you mentioned that the books and the education, you know, somebody mentioned that. So I said, here, let's, let's shoot for the library. So I got the, we got the carpet going in the library. It's gonna be nice. And then the acoustical panels, I'm also assuming here that we have some type of holiday, Christmas celebration auditorium and the band and whatnot. So I fully expect all of those soundboards to include the auditorium, the new ones with the band room. I fully expect that to be done prior to your event for the holidays. So that's, that's in line too. So that's good. The scoreboard, Dr. Stewart, I've been mentioning that, you know, sooner or later, we're gonna go ahead and look at a rendition of the scoreboard and that way we can plan now for next season for the high school. The basketball boards, we have an approved PO for the basketball boards and those are going to be fixed parts within a month. Yep. So the basketball, basketball boards are gonna be functioning soon. Uh, Bland, the, I, I didn't even look at the, looked at the facilities for the field house. I walked into assistant principal over at Bland. We're, we're getting that fixed. So when visitors come to Bland, they're gonna have a nice looking field house. It is, this is not where we need to be. There is an awful lot of trash. There's an awful lot of storage, unused storage. There is a lot of space that could be repurposed. We found good material that can be repurposed and we found an awful lot of stuff that needs to throw in the trash. So we have guys right now at Bland moving trash out, salvage out. We're gonna clean the place and we're looking at targeting my focus on the athletic facility, the field house. So when visitors come to Bland, they'll have something that they can walk away from and be proud that they were there. So that's our plan for Bland right now.
Now the wrestling building down there, have you had a chance to look at it?
The wrestling building?
Yes, dude, the wrestling.
Is that the same, Dr. Stewart, is that the same as what I'm talking about, the different building?
They was, I believe it was water problems, ready to, something there too?
Water problems have been corrected.
Okay.
But maybe I need to take another look at that Bland. There's a wrestling building there? Okay.
It's a block building, cleared into the football field. You go in the parking lot from court, it gets right back.
Yes.
AKM motor's on the right.
Yes.
Right inside the gate, there's a, there's a,
No, I have not been in that building. I have not been, okay, that's, that's the next on my list. Alright, I will go into that building. Alright? Jane Lou. So all of the RTUs, rooftop units, they have been repaired. So all of the RTUs, cool and heat as designed. They are old, we already know that. There's a big plan for a new system. However, they are functioning right now. So that is good. Okay? Able to do that. The parent traffic loop is my next focus on, on Jane Lou. And then Dr. Stewart's already reviewed those plans with me. So I'm looking at getting lot lines surveyed and get some contractors out there to take a look at that. That's gonna be, that's gonna be a very, very nice curb appeal to, to the school. Be a nice conference. Lading Creek. So the subcontractors are busy right now at bus transportation office. They're gonna jump over as soon as they finish up what they're doing with the transportation office. Then they're gonna go for the slab for the storage shed. They're gonna bring in an awful lot of material for gravel and then install that trash closure as well. So thanks for looking pretty good at Lading Creek. I would like to have that storage shed rebuilt and ready, obviously before it snows. That's my goal. Peterson. So we have the HVAC replacement for the classrooms. Didn't quite go the way I wanted it to. I believe that SBA has a difference of opinion. But if it's their money, $175,000, then we're gonna let them take lead on what we're gonna do for classrooms. They do have, they did pivot a little bit on their plan for the classrooms. However, it's just gonna take a little longer before we get resolution. Thankfully, the weather has turned, so we don't have the cooling problem anymore. But now we have the heating problem and it has been confirmed by the SBA that of the classroom unit ventilators, being the HVAC units that are in the classroom, it's confirmed out of thirty, only nine work. So we have some work. Boiler replacement, the cutover is on the 15th of next month. And so that brand new boiler that's back there is gonna get fired up and then we're switching the entire building over to heat anyway. So that's gonna happen on the 15th. No one training on that. That information, all of these cutovers, the new RTUs in the buildings, high school, the next school that comes up, any, any new system that comes online, then that'll also be monitored over at transportation building at my office. So I'll have direct communication with all the systems through the building automation system and the network. The parent traffic loop, obviously this is going in, weather permitting, we'd like to pave on Wednesday, but looks like Dr. Stewart's smiling because she doesn't think it's gonna happen. However, Friday, there isn't a whole lot of rain that's coming in, so we're gonna be paving on Friday, if not Wednesday.
Okay, so we did,
Yes, sir.
Two lanes. Two lanes up?
Two lanes up?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And how many cars can you put in the loop up there?
Okay, so, we will have ongoing, uncoming traffic, okay? So on the right side, we're gonna go up and then we're gonna loop all the way around the top and then all the way back and then back down to this parking lot right here. So the anticipation as far as wheeling it off, it's pretty, pretty close to the distance. It really is, pretty close to the distance between here and sheets as far as cars go. So they're gonna move slow until culture says, well, we don't need to wait, we don't need to get here early because of blocking traffic. So we just need to get here on time. And then that loop will, over time, be used less and less. That's the culture. People come here and they wait because they know they're stuck on that road. And so over time, that'll go away. It's human nature.
Looks like you're doing a good job out there.
Yes, they are.
Yeah.
Yes, they are. And again, for Peterson, I'm sorry, for Jane Lou, we'll have competing crews, competing subcontractors. They may be the winning bid, this is DOS. They, they may be the winning bid, they may not. So, yep. Any other questions about that? Here's one, okay?
Yeah, the drainage, what's your,
Yeah, the drainage, what's your, is drainage a problem out here? So what's your plan to make them set?
Drainage problem here at this school?
Right up here. Cause of hard rain, it backs up and next thing you know, it's down in the street and here, people's property.
Okay, so we have the, as, as far as, so, as far as civil engineering goes, all right? The calculation for 100 year, I, I, I calculated this out and then got it approved with DOT, West Virginia DOT. So the calculation comes out where we are not increasing any impervious soil, all right? Even by widening the road. And so the drains, why it backs up is because of these storm drain inlets that are not cleared prior to a rain event.
Yeah, that's, that's what I wanted to get, and just summing this on those things.
Mainest on, on the storm drain inlets.
Do you have a major drain clear at the top of this playground?
Yes, sir.
And it takes all that water from that hill back through there.
It does.
Couple times a year.
Yes, sir, it does.
solves a lot of problems.
And the, the size of the stone, okay, is gonna be increased when they, when they fill the sand and pavement. So that's the rip wrap. So that will slow down the flow of water as well as the paving that is increased from seven foot wide road up top to 10 foot wide road up top, plus an elevation of the, the blacktop. Then that will stop the mulch from flowing over, reduce the flow of mulch, which is clogging the drains. Right? So the whole system is going to heal and it'll be much better. Especially if the maintenance comes out prior to the rain event, during the rain event, clearing these inlets. Yes, sir. Okay? All right? And that's education on my part to the students, the staff. Roanoke, uh, skylight replacement, I'm trying to get some verification, make sure that we're still on target for the first of November, thereabouts. They're waiting on material. They're not waiting on subcontractors, they're not waiting on anything else. They're just waiting for the material to come in, shipped. The gym floor is on track for 11/11. That's a, uh, two or three day process. And it should hit, uh, right before the new tables for the gym. And then the, uh, upgrade for the fuel tank, the fire pump, want that done for the winter. And that way, if there is an event where we do need the fuel for the fuel tanks, then we have enough capacity and we have the correct piping for that. So we don't have any downtime and down power for the pumps or the school itself, the gym. Board of Education Central, so the big news there is the boiler. We have technicians coming in on a regular basis. And they're, they're working, ordering parts, working, continuing on for the boiler. So I fully anticipate we're gonna have heat, at least at Central, by the end of the year. And as far as transportation goes, probably, it can be a stretch to have heat by the end of the year, but definitely for this winter. Okay? We're, we're just gonna have to tough it out. We're waiting on parts. And the parts are long lead items. With the FRN lease space, then we have the HVAC, HVAC repair. Then we noticed that the HVAC was faulty, the RTU on top of the roof. We noticed that it was faulty when we did the roof repair. So, uh, dispatched and got it on the schedule this week. Anticipate CASO to be out there. And that way they have the same benefits, those at the space, they have the same benefits of the cooling that, that they should be accustomed to. And then of course, we need a facilities in there to fix all the ceiling tiles. But the roof leaks have been patched at the FRN building. The, um, next thing that at the FRN building, I didn't put it on, I'll put it on next week, is the fire alarm panel. So the fire alarm panel is not on the original radar for our company. And so we're gonna double check with Dr. Stewart. And then I think that that one should be addressed as well as facilities. Facilities probably should have some type of alert system. And currently they don't at that building. So I think we oughta put it in. But I need to confer with Dr. Stewart on that. Transportation, uh, like I said, the guys are working on the bus corral. So we've dropped the telephone poles that are in the buses' ways, so the buses aren't hitting the telephone poles anymore. We have a, uh, security light on the back fence now. The privacy fence for neighbor is going up as we speak. And then the lot will be graded out. We have popper repairs, uh, right there. Maybe next year, maybe the year after, we probably will put down some blacktop, maybe some mullings. And that way we can reduce the dust and the dirt on the, on the buses. The pad for the wash bay heater pump, that's getting poured probably next week. And then the biggest problem that we have right now is currently starting today, we're jackhammering the floors. And we have eight drains that are completely blocked. So they're jackhammering the floors right now. Now, this is, this is the same type of scenario that we can see at Jane Lou. However, we don't have kids there, so we're just kinda toughing it out, trying to leave one restroom open. And then share work around that. Um, again, the facilities that I mentioned, the, the fire alarm panel upgrade. But that's all I have. So, uh, transportation is once a month, when I get the reports back. Sorry, I don't have a transportation report yet. But, uh, any other questions, someone else?
Is there, is there any chance, of course, we'd wanna confer with, with Mariah on the budget, the bathrooms at this, at this facility here? It has been brought to our attention. Is there any way that you would mind looking at it with Mr. Brand? What it would potentially take to epoxy floors, maybe some new sinks?
The plumbing, I've already had the, um, subcontractor come out. And that's not just the sinks, but that's also the water fountains. It's also the toilets, the flush valves. All of the plumbing has been approved on PO already. So that has already been addressed. Um, floor, the floor epoxy. Facilities guys, they're, they, they might not have all the skill sets that we're looking for, okay? For that type of specialty work. So the answer is yes. We'll get a flooring contractor out here and we'll find a more permanent solution. So, yes, sir, I'm gonna meet you guys.
Appreciate you.
Okay? Anything else?
How's your, how's your staffing on your drivers?
On the drivers?
Yeah.
We are down some drivers.
How many?
Four. Total, than, than what, you know, we're accustomed to. And so at that point, we have regrouped. I believe two weeks ago, we were parking routes. Now we're not, okay? We're absorbing the routes. And on the PL day, PL is the term used, okay? On the PL day, we had an opportunity to train, we had an opportunity to problem solve. And they wanted to problem solve. So of each region, north, south, east, west, and city, then they had an opportunity to come up with solutions. If a driver was out in either one of these, any of these zones, maybe two drivers, how are we going to fix that problem if we have zero subs? And they all came up with solutions. And they all signed it. And that's what we have instituted this last week. And it's working. And it's their idea.
I've got an idea.
Yes, sir.
If I'm a janitor here, if I'm a service personnel, my shift's six to two. And I've got my CDL permit. I can help you.
Certainly.
It didn't bother my primary job. Will we ever explore something like that?
We can, we can look into that, yes. Yes. If there are substitutes. And that's, that's probably along, along the exact same lines that we're using for administration of transportation office. Is that we don't have a secretary. And so the bus drivers are filling in, yes, on rotation. So that is something, yes. I would like to also add to that, that's, that's, that's the idea. That's a fantastic idea. I would like to add to that then, maybe a, maybe a substitute custodian or a custodian who would like to get into a little more hands-on and maybe do facilities work. Substitute facility, we need the help.
You could have a maintenance guy that works through the day, do a sudden janitorial sudden needed.
Yes.
No extra money for them?
Yes.
Still helps our service, keeps our schools going.
Cross, cross-training. That's what you're talking about and that's, that's a very valuable tool. Yes, sir.
I, I do appreciate that the, that the bleachers at the football field, the power wash, that visitor sign was really, really bad.
Yes.
It was, it was somewhat embarrassing. And, and I saw the guys bragging about, the guys at Washington bragging about, I know bucks us some money, but, but, you know, I like what you said when, when, when people come in here. I mean, you know, we gotta show them that at least we have, have our stuff together to, to a degree, you know? And I, I don't mean to talk about athletics, but I'll quote Brendan Baker real quick for you. I did it before to the Dr. Stewart. Athletics is not the most important thing we do on the campus. But it's what everybody sees.
Sure.
So if we can keep it clean and, and, and try to take care of our stuff, that, I think that helps. And it'll help the whole community and, and, and keeping the schools clean. Because when people are looking to, to locate to, to a new place, and we have some folks that are here that are new from, from out of town that are here working in our, our county now. But, you know, if you show them good facilities and, and good stuff, I, I think it helps the whole community because you can, you can potentially attract people in. So I think that's, I think it's really important. So I appreciate that, that effort.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate all your, all the work you do under some of this report. Because I, currently I have a better understanding of everything that's went on with facilities.
Sure.
Well, one, one thing I'd like to say is, I'd like to thank the drivers for coming together. Cause I've been in that, you know, position, you know, up around Walkerville, where I drove before. And I want to thank them for, you know, coming and getting the job done at the end of the day. I mean, that's just what it boils down to.
Yes.
Uh, also, one other concern I've got, uh, we've done a wonderful job with all this here. Now, knock on wood, if, if the money we're spending on these facilities, if we would lose some kind of state funding or something like that, do we have the money to back up what we're going so that we don't? In the long term, what I'm saying is, so that we don't run into a, a problem? If we would happen, I thought was, uh, lose funding?
What I, what I can say is that my world is this big. And then Mariah's with the budget and then Dr. Stewart's with the budget, okay? So what I can say is that I'm pacing myself, right? We're working on solid investment at a slower and a smaller scale. And I'm building up with that. And my communication with Mariah is fairly regular, okay? Are we on budget? She gives me the reports, I review them. I mean, the biggest, the biggest PO that I put in is this one here at 75 grand. That's, that's the biggest one. So everything else is, you know, just for lack of a better term, chump change. But it's getting these small baby steps and getting to know the K-12 system that I'm not familiar with. This is not a budget that I'm familiar with. I'm familiar with just write checks. And so I'm very much pacing myself. I'm working with Dr. Stewart and Mariah and getting this done. Now, next year, then we'll be looking at major improvements at 300, $400,000 a pop. And so then I really have to sit down and scale that out. But we're not spending that yet. So, yes, sir.
The parking lot of Jane Lou, that's just, I know you said last time that down, come up to here, remember? Have you got any bids on it yet?
No, I have not, uh, uh, fully vetted the plans yet. So I'm gonna drop the plans. I'm going to run the calculations to make sure that we don't have any watershed problems. And I'm gonna present that to DOT. They're gonna verify it. But I'm gonna do all the civil engineering in-house. And once that plan then becomes approved, then I can fully vet the subs for that one. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Let me, let me ask one more. Well, I got you, and Dr. Stewart probably have to, have to pipe in on this one. And, and it's about extracurricular bus jobs. Because we're so short of drivers and such. And unfortunately, from, from an athletic perspective, we go along one. I mean, the high school football team will be to Berkeley Springs on Friday night. And the volleyball team will be going to Hampshire one way or the other. And you can't hardly get there in time if, if they, if, if they do the run. How, and, and if it's a, if, if there's an academic thing, I know we talked about this right when I came aboard, that we had a way to, to, to classify things as, I can't remember, we called it critical trip or something? If it's an academic trip? Are, are we still able to do that? Is that working or do we have to look at something, something fresh and new to, to try to make it work? I mean, I, I, I don't want, I don't want the ROTC to miss going to, to the base that they're going to or something because we don't have drivers. And I, I, I just don't, I just wondered if we could check in how that's working. And, and I know that, that we're working hard to get those kids to their games and stuff. I mean, and, and to sporting events and, again, we're going long distances. You know, and I think, I think they, they may revisit that at some point in SSAC and stuff. But we're going, we're going long distances. I mean, you get there five or 10 minutes before, before a basketball game or a football game or a volleyball match. You can't, you can't expect kids to get out there and be ready. So it's just something that we need to think about to make sure that we know what, uh, what we can do to, to address that. And I know we've done some stuff with fans and some other things, but, but, you know, the academic trip and that, that, that's still on my, weighs on my mind a little bit. Just because of the shortage of the drivers and no subs.
The agreement that was made with the bus drivers that's in writing is that the superintendent identifies which trips are critical and which ones are not. The two reasons that they are critical is because they're out of state or they're overnight. Those are the two reasons that they can be identified as critical.
That's the only reason.
Those are the only reasons, unless I have, there is a clause in there that says I have discretion. But we have only done those two at this point. Because those are the reasons, those are the big trips that are gonna pull drivers out of rotation on their regular runs. So that's why we decided to do this.
And I, and I get the regular runs being the most important thing that, that we have going. But, but you just have to have other solutions. And I, I don't know quite what they are, you know? I mean, I wish I did and that's why I'm bringing it up to maybe rethink what we're doing and figure out if there's other ways to get kids where they need to go so they don't miss those trips. I mean, it's impossible and it's everywhere. It's not just Lewis County. It's every, you call 55 counties and probably 50 states. So it, it, it's everywhere, but.
My directive has been very clear, and I received it just the other day from Dr. Stewart. So I am not gonna miss an athletic trip. And I'm not gonna part with us. Those are my directives. So with that said, okay? That's my answer, all right?
And, and, and it's more than athletic trips. I mean.
Do you have your CDL?
You know?
If I had time.
Because, because.
A little busy.
We don't, we particularly don't miss academic trips, you know? Where, where kids are wanting to do what they're, you know, what we, what we need them to be doing.
So what we have instituted is this self-designed by the bus drivers, okay? This is their plan. And that's what's so successful.
And it's covering, it's covering runs.
It's covering runs. That's what's so successful is it's their plan. They didn't hear it from me, okay? They came up with it. So the best way for them to attack this problem, the shortage of drivers, is by zones. A driver in city knows pretty much all of those routes. And if they double up, or if they share and absorb these routes, then we can still-ish get the kids to and from school on time. So we can actually, now, this is not something that we wanna do long-term. And there is a point where we can only squeeze so much out of this, okay? But we have been running on the south end, which is the Roanoke school area of Walkerville, okay? By the way, that's way out there, all right? I had to drive there this morning. That, that's like forever out there. So anyway, Walkerville, for example, that area, okay? They're covering without one driver already. And they've been doing it since the, well, the 26th of last month, okay? And they're making it work. They haven't missed any kids, they haven't been late, but it's covering right now. I can't squeeze any more out of the south end. But the north end, we have room. East and west, we have room. In city, we have room for two. So if there is a demand such as this Friday for buses to be out, then we do have the coverage. We're calling as many sub, uh, sub-drivers as we can that exist. We're trying to get these new sub-drivers online as best. We're trying to get these new sub-drivers online as fast as possible, and it's a challenge, but we're gonna make it happen.
How many sub-drivers do we have?
We are down. We, we are hurting for sub-drivers. Today, for example, we had zero. We just didn't have anybody to call. Health issues, retirement, it, it's rough, it's rough. And, and I mentioned, I believe in the last meeting, is that our mechanic, okay? He's my ace, but he can only drive one bus at a time. So I don't have a mechanic at that time.
Well, another thing I've noticed, and I go to a lot of ballgames and stuff like that, a lot of these other folks do. So I see what other counties do, and you'd be surprised how many of them aren't using buses or using parent transport and, and the other things. I, I mean, I was, I was shocked how many of them, I said, "How'd you get, how'd you get to this soccer game?" And they came from, they came from Huntington or wherever, or Charleston or something. And he said, "Well, parents." So, so I, I, I mean, they, they're having to make it work in other counties in, in different manners. And we just need to keep all that in, in mind, that, that, you know, we've got to make it work on, on every trip we have, whether academic or, or athletic, if at all possible.
What, what is helping, and I will tell you, so if you, please, I invite you to come to the Transportation Building, okay? The boards are up there, and they're one, two weeks in advance. And so we know on a regular basis, are subs available? No. Are runs being covered? Yes. Who can make, make this happen? What problem does Tyler need to solve right now, okay, for next week? How can I start working on this right now? So this information is posted loud and proud, and it works.
So it, it's posted for a week, so you have a driver that they bid on it from a seniority perspective, on a trip?
Yes, yes. We've bid on it the day, only the day after, the, the next day is what's bid on. But what's posted on the board is at least a full week in advance. And the drivers also get, through email, and this is new to them, very much new to them, they have the entire activity schedule up until, I think the update is February or April of next year. They have the entire droplet schedule emailed to them. They have access to it. Everything that's in droplet, they have, so they can see it. And it works. It's helping. I invite you to come to the Transportation Building. Look at the board, talk to the guys.
I did it a month ago, the matter of fact.
So I'm a driver, and I've got a drive tomorrow for Mrs. Lambert. I'm gonna take, the high school is probably your biggest customer, aren't they?
Yes.
How do we confirm she's gonna get a bus that next day?
How do we confirm?
How does she know she's gonna get a bus that next day?
She can, well, it, it's on droplet, but she can also just contact me, which you've done, which you've had conversation with.
I think that, I think that they just want to make sure that they have a bus every day. If that was her asking, like, teachers are asking...
Yeah, we put a lot of time in these trips.
Well, now, do they still send transportation requests in, paper?
No.
Like, if, if a teacher wants to do a trip?
It's electronic now.
It's like on a...
Right.
I mean, they send them electronic to whatever. It's like, say, if, say like they're gonna go here in April, and they're gonna go to the game park, I believe, game park, right? They, they send that to you, I mean, elementary, I'm sorry.
I can help you out with that. So the way you used to do it with paper.
Right.
And now we do it on the computer. We send, we send a form on the computer, and it goes from the teacher to the administrator, to Dr. Stewart, to Mariah, it goes, it's electronic. So remember how we used to do the old carpet copies? Those are gone now. And we do it on the computer now. And it goes...
So there is a record of, like, just, and I'm just using this.
Yeah.
Say, say a teacher says, "Oh, I didn't, I sent that in." Well, they didn't send it in, so there's a way for you to check.
There is a record up to a certain point that I can see, but we do not see, and I see it with stick in their head, there's a point where we see, we don't see the final piece if a driver has been assigned. That's the part, and you see people shaking their head, that's the part that we don't see. So we see it approved all the way to a point to where the driver gets assigned. We don't see that one. We, we, that's where it stops, where we have reached your assignment. And the teachers, teachers can't see it, but that's how we do it. But yes, the old carpet copies, the way that you're talking about, we don't do that anymore, so let's on. So what happened after a meeting that we had is that we got a spreadsheet, we got a version of a spreadsheet, so to speak, from droplet. So I can see if a run is now going to put in the system and been assigned. So like, let's say, for example, our, our culinary kids are going out tomorrow to Morgantown. That is on that spreadsheet for that bus to leave out tomorrow morning at eight o'clock. I can see that now. Up until that meeting, we did not see that.
Sure, sure. So there's that communication, sir, that you're talking about, that, that's how they know. Or they can just call, and, and you can just look at the board, say, yes, it's on the board and it's assigned. But again, the bidding isn't until the day, the next day. All right? Anything else? All right, thank you.
Superintendent updates?
I have just a couple of things. I ready has been in the county doing training for our administrators and our teachers. S R E B was here on our P L day and worked at all programmatic levels for unpacking the standards. We are, I know Mrs. Lambert has been working with the trades union to finalize those details so that our students can begin at the painters union in January. Attendance initiatives are starting to show in the data. As you saw today, there are large numbers of contacts being made with families. And there have been a couple of filings that have occurred at this point in the year. We are working really well with the court system, and Ms. Vincent spoke to that a little bit for attendance, as well as other issues that are surrounding our students. This week is Red Ribbon Week and College Application and Exploration Week. So both of those are happening at the same time and being celebrated across the district. And with the government shutdown, we have been notified by Superintendent Blatt that at this point, all of our federal monies are safe. We have those secured at the state level, and so we, at this point, will not be impacted by that.
That is Dr. Stewart?
That's it.
Mr. Holden?
Yeah, I wanna congratulate everybody on this road out here. I know since I've been on the board, that's been a problem, traffic's been a problem. So everybody, job well done. I mean, it's, it's looking really good out there. It looks like it's gonna work, so. So I just wanna thank, you know, everybody for that. Like, again, I'd like to thank the bus drivers for coming together and, and solving, you know, the shortage of subs, you know, working together. I want to thank, you know, the teachers and everything for, you know, doing their part of, you know, getting the trips in. So it's, it's, it sounds like it's all pretty good. But I just wanted to congratulate everybody on a job well done.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Mr. Brand, Mrs. Fisher, for the hospitality tonight. We appreciate it. You're a good man out there, you all, we appreciate what you're doing. I got to speak for last week at Mrs. Raymond's C T class jobs for West Virginia graduates. Being a board member, you think you hear everything, you know everything, but going to school, and you're gonna learn. The best learning experience I've had in a while is going to school. And I'm talking to different kids in their program, it's a great program. And the girl spoke up, several kids in the class, and she said, "Mr. White, I came here in the ninth grade, and I was on a fifth grade reading班." She said this in front of all her students. And I said, "Well, what happened?" She said, "Through co-teaching and teachers here at Lewis County High School," she said, "I'm, I'm up to, I'm caught up now." She mentioned co-teaching, you all talked about co-teaching. She said, "Well, being classes, I would struggle, and I'd have a second teacher helping me." And she said, "I'm where I need to be right now." She's gonna graduate, she's got a job in the afternoon, she leaves school, so, very nice story. Well, we hear a lot of negatives about our school system anymore, but we do a lot of things right, and I want to thank everybody.
Mr. Bush?
Also want to thank Peterson for being excellent host. I like what's going on out here. But also want to thank all the employees in Lewis County and everything they did, so. As a than that, I'm good.
Mr. Fager?
I, I would just follow up on that a little bit. I, I appreciate your hospitality. You know, I have a lot of faith in, in, in the folks that, that work in this school. My kids were here, and, and, and I believe in, in all of our employees in Lewis County as well, who are overworked and underpaid. Do a lot of things that, that we don't even know they do as, as board members. And, and, and I, I truly appreciate that. I think that, that we have our county moving in, in the right direction. And I honestly believe that from a, from a, from some different perspectives, nevertheless. I appreciate the, the good work at the high school, and what we got to see up here, recognized today in the C T program and college readiness, all that stuff, I, I mean, it, it's outstanding. The one, the one thing that I'd like to see as a board member, and I mentioned it, mentioned it earlier, Dr. Stewart, and, and I don't know how we see it, or how you can provide it, or whatever, but, but I'd love to see staff absenteeism from year to year at different schools, whether it's up, down, service personnel, wherever it is. Just, just because I think that, 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 that tells you how we're doing as, as, as a county. And, 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 you know, there, there, there are certain things, like, like Mr. Majelka talked about, the, the silver chain loop. I knew that a year ago. I feel like that's, I feel like that's on us, you know? We knew that, we knew that a year ago. So, so he's on top of it, and, and his report's great, but, but, you know, I feel like I have to do better, knowing that I heard that a year ago with Jane Lu. Today, we're still in the same boat. So, that said, again, I appreciate your hospitality and the board's good, some great things happening out here in Lewis County.
So a couple of things, I echo everybody's sentiments, a couple, a couple of things that I didn't want to necessarily gloss over. Tyler with the carpet library, that's been long overdue, overdue, my friend, so happy to, happy to hear that's getting accomplished. And then your communication, communication's key with Mr. Brand to get this done. That's been something that's been long ago, that, that I feel like if we could get that achieved, then it's just that one step closer. And one of the communication piece, the meeting that, that you had with the high school, with the bus drivers, that, that's all absolutely critical. How do we, how do we even find, how do we fine tune that more? How, how is there an interface to where there could be a, a notification between you two that, that perhaps we have that, that driver available? And if not, what kind of contingency does that look like? I don't know, you guys are smart folks. How do we, how do we even improve that? Leave it up to you, I know you all will. So that's, that's a suggestion that I, I think that we can maybe even be a little stronger at. Second, or my, my last thing, I heard Ms. Mona mention a tardy policy. Do we have a tardy policy? And if we do, do, if we don't, do we need to maybe look into something?
We do, we do not have a tardy policy. The state has removed that from their policy, and so we follow suit with the state.
Okay. Very good.
But do individual schools have a tardy policy? It was in that recent bill, wasn't it?
It, it was, yeah, they removed it.
Very good.
I don't have anything further. The next meeting is November tenth at Roanoke Elementary. It's gonna be an L S I C meeting. Do you have a motion for adjournment?
To lose.
Call this in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.